is a again a cloudier start for us certainly. We got down to only around 40 this morning. That was our morning low. We've warmed up a whole two degrees so far. We're at 42 officially in the Twin Cities, 42 Eden Prairie, 40 in Hugo, 41 in Woodbury, 42 in Eagan. We're going to scrape and claw our way to get to around 45 or 46 this afternoon. And we don't have any motivation really to warm up. An eastern breeze coming on in here keeps things a little cooler in the 30s coming off of Lake Superior. Most folks in the 40s across the state, but just barely. And then there's that oddball 39 down in Wyndham. The cloud cover came rolling on in yesterday evening and last night after a beautiful weekend with highs in the 50s and some sunshine both on Saturday and Sunday. It's just cloudy and I know that looks very active. We filled in the blanks here. The radar, no matter whether you look at it here or on your Fox nine weather app or whatever, is just going to look very busy. I would go so far as to say just 90% of that isn't hitting the ground. That which is is incredibly light. We picked up, I know it was out and about over the past couple of hours, maybe seven tiny little drips on my windshield as I went through. Maybe some very light rain across sections of western and southwestern Minnesota has popped up a few hundredths of an inch in some locations have tried to fall. So there's attempts being made way up there in the atmosphere, but as it falls through our dry atmosphere, our dew points are only in the 20s. They're normal quote unquote. All that moisture just gets leached right back in. We've done that a lot in general this November. So just in generally cloudy sky with very spotty light drips. Futurecast tries to pick up on some of that, but again disorganized until a cold front starts to move our way through the evening and overnight hours tonight, rolling into the Twin Cities, probably close to the morning commute tomorrow. And that would be a chance for at least something resembling a shower at that point. Everything else is just very weak, cloudy stray sprinkles, stray light drips. Temperatures holding in those middle 40s today with southeast winds at five to 10 miles per hour. Tonight mainly cloudy sky. That cold front will push on through after midnight. So anytime really between midnight, maybe five or six AM, an opportunity for a week shower possibly mixing with a snowflake up north. Overnight lows in the 30s and then the morning cloud cover tomorrow would give way to a clearing trend through tomorrow afternoon and some sunshine returns. But by this point we'll have northwest winds behind that cold front, 10 to 20 miles per hour, getting a little gusty at times. And that 40 degree high, seasonable, will aim for that with the sunshine returning. That 40 degree high won't feel that way. It'll feel like the 20s and 30s for those wind chills all day with that brisk breeze that comes a calling. Now we are going to roll right back up to around 50 on Wednesday for some travel or just outdoor, whatever you need to do. Put up your string of lights if you want to, because after that it does get cold into the holiday weekend as we're struggling to even thaw into parts of Thanksgiving and Black Friday. I'll have all those details with the seven day forecast coming up around 11:30. Tom.
And that's when I'll determine when to put up those lights.
There you go. Thank you, sir.
As the days are getting colder, many of us are starting to crank up the heat certainly. And the Commerce Department is reminding all of us about some resources available to Minnesotans who are in need. The Energy Assistance Program is for households that have incomes at or below 50% of the state median income, which is a little over $62,000 for a family of four. Last year, Minnesota saw a record number of people who applied for energy assistance. But this year is on pace to top that. The Commerce Department just got $112 million in federal money to help support more households this year. The director of the EAP program says the funding is crucial as the demand only continues to grow.
About 40,000 households had already been determined eligible for about $20.5 million in bill payment assistance. And at the same point last year, we had only 14,000 households that were approved for about $7 million. So we're well ahead of where we were last year, both just in terms of processing applications, but also in terms of program demand.
Nearly 100,000 people in the state have applied for energy assistance since September, an increase of about 10,000 applicants from last year. Those who qualify can also get free energy upgrades through the weatherization program. Both programs are open to homeowners and renters. If you're interested in applying, just head over to the Commerce Department's website. Happening today, around 80 St. Paul public school teachers will get an early holiday gift. They received free supplies thanks to a donation from Amazon. The teachers are all part of the program called What I Need Now. They help provide group reading instruction in order to improve test scores following the pandemic. Amazon donated several books, games and other learning tools for teachers. The donation comes as the St. Paul Public School District aims to promote literacy more this school year. In business headlines this morning, a big shakeup in Silicon Valley just days after he was ousted as CEO of OpenAI, the company that gave the world chat GPT, Sam Altman has a new gig. He's also been now hired by Microsoft. Altman will lead the company's new advanced AI research team. Microsoft made a massive investment in OpenAI when it was a startup. A former leader of Twitch will be OpenAI's new CEO. What if you don't get all your Thanksgiving shopping done early? What are the most in-demand ingredients? Well, Instacart is sharing some of the most common purchases on the app the day before Thanksgiving. When it comes to food, whipped cream, you got to have that to go on. The second most popular last minute item, you just saw it, pumpkin pie. Elba pasta comes in at number three. For non-food items, the top three are disposable plates and trays, aluminum foil and disposable utensils. Who wants dirty dishes? The Gopher Women's Basketball Team was back in action facing a hometown star, former Hopkins High School basketball star Paige Becker's and the Yukon Huskies battling the Gophers at the barn last night. The arena was packed for this special game with young fans flooding the arena wearing Becker's jerseys. She says this was surreal, playing in her home state in the arena where she had dreams of playing D1 basketball, and that's how it all began.
I grew up coming to games here, grew up watching a lot of players play here. And for me to be the one taking the court in a game I used to watch was kind of crazy, kind of surreal.
Yukon, by the way, beat Minnesota 62 to 44. This was the largest Gopher Women's crowd since 2018. The Wild went to Sweden, but it was very disappointing. They would lose both games they played. They fell in overtime to Ottawa on Saturday. They would lose in OT again last night to Toronto. Wild tied it up against the Leafs, but they couldn't hold on. The Leafs would win it four to three. Up next for the Wild, back here at home against the Colorado Avalanche. That'll be on Friday night. Are you ready for Thanksgiving? And are you hosting or are you visiting? If you are visiting, a hostess gift is still a thing. Some ideas on what to bring to your tea day feast. And if you're still hungry after that meal, the prequel to The Hunger Games might fill you up. More on the new film and the franchise and how it did its opening debut. Stay right there. The Monday edition of What's Trending is up next with Keith and Tom. Here we are. It is a Monday and Thanksgiving week. We're excited about that.
Happy turkey soon.
Yeah, I like that. Here's what's trending for you this morning. The games began again at movie theaters.
Yeah, Hunger Games prequel topped the weekend box office.
I do my best to take care of you.
You really want to take care of me in that arena? Start by thinking I can actually win.
I'm lucky flickerman. Yeah, the Ballad of Songbirds and Snakes. That goes like this. Tweet, tweet. Tweet, tweets. Oh, debuted to $44 million. However, ticket sales were expected to be at least 50 million.
Oh, that's true.
Film experts say it might have enough time to reach expectations over the Thanksgiving week. The new Trolls Day movie debuted in second place, earning more than $30 million. The Marvels, which I watched over the weekend.
And?
It was pretty good. I enjoyed it. Thanksgiving, which I'd like to see. And Five Nights at Freddy's, which I have actually seen as well.
Is that good?
It was enjoyable.
Good campy fun.
Yeah, they round out the top five.
I like that.
Well, if you're going to someone else's home for Thanksgiving, you may be wondering, hey, am I supposed to bring something?
Yes.
Like a gift? According to a survey, most people say yes, with about 45% of people saying they usually or always bring a hostess gift. Those gifts are often a bottle of wine, liquor, flowers, a plant.
Always appreciated.
Etiquette experts say you should never give a host a gift card. Home decor. I brought these, uh, these valances for your, for your living room windows. Or artwork. I painted something for you, Tom.
Was it your daughter?
Hmm, I painted something for you, Tom. Meanwhile, according to the survey, 15% of people, 15% of people say they don't bring a gift at all. I got that.
Okay, I knew you would. St. Paul Library gets a very, very late return. Someone returned a book titled Famous Composers more than 100 years after it was checked out. The book was checked out back in 1919. It was recently returned after someone sorted through a relative's belongings and found it. The library won't be collecting a late fee, no, which would have been more than $30,000. In fact, they all had a good laugh, slapped their knees when it was returned. Library officials say it likely won't go back into circulation because of the history attached now to this book 100 years later.
We're suing you for the back. All the fees. We've got ourselves our cloud cover and our cooler day compared to where we've been. But it's still and has been all day long above average. Also got a couple of little light drips out there. I'll have details coming up.
Very good. Also coming up, you're not the only one going to grandma's house. Just how many of us will be traveling by air and by car this Thanksgiving holiday? A live report just minutes away, right here on the Fox nine morning news at 11 on this Monday.
This is Fox nine news at 11.
Here we are. Here we are. It is Thanksgiving week. Here we're seeing it, Keith, and we're thinking about, yep, turkey and all the trimmings and all the fun. On Thursday, getting to that point, Keith, not too bad for the most part.
No, you know, we got our cloud cover today. We take a step to seasonable tomorrow. It'll be a little breezy and then we ramp up Wednesday for the good chunk of the upper Midwest. If you're driving, should be fine. Temperatures around 50 and relatively quiet. Might be a little bit of a breeze at times. If you're traveling out east, there will be a little bit of perhaps something to slow you down. I'll show you that in just a second. And the meantime, our cloud cover is in place. Our high so far today has been 45. That is not our current temperature. That was our temperature at midnight last night. We were in the mid 40s until about two o'clock this morning and slowly slid. We got down to 40 in the eight o'clock hour this morning. We stayed there at nine o'clock and we've only picked up a couple of degrees since. But if you'll note, an average high is 40 and we should be in the mid 20s for a typical low. Records are in the 60s. We were in the 50s over the weekend. That was great, three below our record low. That's back in 1921. Sunset this afternoon coming in right around 4:40. Out the door right now here in the Twin Cities, as I mentioned, 42 degrees. Dew points have been in the 20s to lower 30s, a little bit more moisture is getting in that atmosphere a little bit. And we're starting to see a few light sprinkles and drips even around the Twin Cities. It's, uh, it's more organized than a mist, slightly, I don't even, it's hard to call even a sprinkle from what we've experienced here and there, but just random little spritzies coming out. East winds around nine miles per hour, five to 10 miles per hour. All does give us a slight chill. Feels like it's in the middle 30s. Nothing like the rain going on across parts of Arkansas. That's a good little line of storms right there marching on off towards the east and the southeast. There's actually a level three severe threat associated with any of these storms as they blossom and develop, but currently no watchers or warnings active. That level three threat is for a little deeper in the day down in Louisiana and Mississippi. With that level one threat all the way up into Arkansas, though, it's been trimmed out of southern Missouri. But this area of low pressure is going to move through the deep south and hook right up the east coast. And as it does, that will be the middle of the week and that goes into our travel days. So with some rain and rumbles, a little active weather, it could slow down some of those east coast airports into the day on Wednesday. For us, radar is very busy, but not much is hitting the ground. The deeper blues at least show the potential for a slightly disorganized attempt at a legitimate shower. Very weak system moving on by. A few hundredths of an inch at best have fallen in the metro area. Couple of sprinkles have fallen in the pale blue, maybe a couple of sprinkles. But it's this cold front that will move into the area overnight tonight and it'll help to push all this out of the way. Before it does, it squeezes out again, the extra cloud cover, a stray sprinkle. But then it organizes a line of some showers that might mix in with some snowflakes up north by around anywhere from midnight to four, five o'clock tomorrow morning. A few weak drying drips are possible. Then morning cloud cover gives way to a clearing trend with a little bit more of a blustery feel in the afternoon. It might be brighter, but it'll be a bit breezy as we go on into tomorrow afternoon, as we again get some sunshine back. But those northwest winds, they undercut that cooler temperature with some chills that stay a little notable. For today, though, cloudy and cooler than the weekend, but still above average. 46 degrees is what we're going to aim for this afternoon. Still above average with again stray spritzes or sprinkles here and there. Overnight tonight, clouds linger. We'll have a more organized attempt at a shower late tonight or early tomorrow morning with that cold front passage and then clearing behind that front into tomorrow afternoon with a high pushing 40. But again, with those northwest winds, you'll feel like the 20s and 30s pretty much all day. Back to around 50 with some sunshine on our Wednesday. That's again a decent day right there. Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving weekend as a whole looks quiet. That's awesome, but also it's cold. High pressure builds on in here and it's a cold Canadian high. And here comes temperatures struggling to even get above freezing on Thanksgiving afternoon. We'll aim for 33 on Black Friday, 32 for a high temperature again with a morning in the teens and then mid 30s with quiet but partly cloudy sky take us into Saturday and Sunday.
I'm thinking Wednesday, lights go up.
I think that's a great idea, Tom.
Do you have yours up yet?
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Do you get the jack to help?
No.
Was it all you?
No.
Or you had someone else do it?
I did this year.
Ah, that's.
I cheated this year.
I do remember you. I know.
Every two or three years I get a little help.
That's nice. That's nice. I may need to look into that card.
I think it's a good thing. I don't go on ladders anymore, Tom.
That's, that's good. Thank you, sir. A lot of people we know will be hitting the road certainly to fly out of town this week. Travel experts are saying this holiday travel season will be one of the busiest since the pandemic. So expect busier roads, longer lines at the airport. Unfortunately, the weather could also create some additional headaches for travelers. Fox's Kennedy Hayes, she is live at Chicago O'Hare International Airport. She joins us now. Kennedy, how are things there right now at O'Hare?
Well, Tom, I can tell you, travel experts told me that airports are likely to be the most packed in the morning this week. And that is exactly what I have seen and the crowds do not seem to be slowing down. I spoke to a few travelers headed to Florida, Virginia and Georgia about how it's been going.
I wish I had, did the TSA pre-check. I wish I had did that. Other than that, it looks like it's just really pretty well organized.
We got here on the early side. We don't actually take off till about quarter to 11:00. And it's pretty early right now, so always better to go early, right?
It's busy, but it's not overwhelming.
These are the top 10 busiest airports this week, according to the Hopper travel website. Chicago's O'Hare International Airport is only the ninth busiest airport, according to Hopper. Nearly 800,000 people will fly out of O'Hare in total this week. As usual, the busiest airport, Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International, is expecting more than 1.7 million departing passengers this week. Now, if you are traveling today, Hopper says some of the best ways to prepare for potential long lines are to get to the airport early and sign up for alerts with your airline. And airports tend to get more crowded the closer we get to Thanksgiving. In Chicago, Kennedy Hayes, Fox nine.
All right, Kennedy, thanks so much. Appreciate it. Before you hit the road for Thanksgiving this week, experts say there are some things you should double check to avoid any possible breakdowns along the way. While most of the things to keep an eye on are under your hood, such as your oil level, your washer fluid and cooling system, you also might want to check the condition of each of your tires.
We're going to check tire conditions on every tire. We're going to check for dry rot. We're going to check for separation. When things break, they can break other things. Always more affordable to do preventative maintenance versus reactive repair.
Well, and you don't want to have this happen, but sometimes you do break down. You end up stuck on the side of the road for a while. And if that happens, it's important to have a few maybe blankets, some extra food and water in the car as well as, you know, making sure you have a full tank of gas. And now is a great time to fill up your tank as gas prices keep creeping lower. This morning, we were sitting at nearly $2 below the national average here in Minnesota. And this over five cents cheaper than we were a week ago, 30 cents cheaper than a month ago. Ahead of a potential holiday season surge, Americans can order more free COVID-19 tests right now. The US government is offering to send another four of four at home virus, those four at four home virus tests ahead of the typical surge during the holiday season. If you did not get the last free batch in September, you can get them, you can get any of them if you'd like. You can order the free tests at covidtests.gov. Hibbing native Adam Johnson's British teammates find a permanent way to remember him. Johnson's Nottingham Panthers jersey has now been retired. His team retired number 47 during an emotional memorial game in England over the weekend. The 29-year-old was killed during a tragic collision with an opponent on the ice last month. Johnson's death has now led the sports world to reexamine safety regulations. As the shortage of therapists continues, the Bloomington Police Department is helping to launch Minnesota's first mental health rapid response pilot program. That program will cost $63,000. The money comes from a federal opioid settlement and from public safety dollars. It is free for all residents. The group will consist of new therapists and students getting clinical hours, working with the police department. The purpose of the group is to get immediate help to those who need it.
So how this will work is one, you know, I'll give the example, say our officers are dispatched to someone who's having a brain health crisis. They will refer them to the social worker. The social worker will then determine if they're good or eligible for therapy. Then we will contact them, connect them with the therapist immediately as opposed to having people wait the two months, which is the average wait time right now for in-home therapists.
The pilot program will run for one year. If it's successful, they will look to expand the program. New this morning, a popular show celebrating all things aviation has been grounded at least for a year. The Wings of the North announcing this morning they won't have the Air Expo show in 2024. The group says the rising costs and lack of enough room at Flying Cloud Airport in Eden Prairie are the reasons for this decision. They hope to bring back the show in 2025. New this morning, a country music star is going to the lake next summer in Minnesota. Dirks Bentley will be one of the headliners at the 2024 Lakefront Music Fest in Prior Lake. He'll be joined by L. King and Morgan Evans. The Lakefront Music Fest is a two-night event. Bentley headlining the Country Night on July 13th. The Rock Night, always the night before, July 12th. That headliner has yet to be announced. Tickets are on sale right now. If you're planning to shop on Black Friday, you may want to do a little research right now. Wallet Hub is warning customers that not all Black Friday deals actually save you money. The company's report found about 35% of items offer no savings on Black Friday compared to retailers' pre-Black Friday prices. Experts say to make note of prices now so you will know if Friday's advertised sale is actually worth it. Wallet Hub says that the best deals are usually on appliances, apparel and accessories. The worst categories for sales are electronics and furniture. After the Thanksgiving meal, many Minnesota families will turn their attention to Christmas and will make the journey to a tree farm, maybe to pick out a Christmas tree. One farm says the day after Thanksgiving is always the busiest day of the year. But thanks to warmer weather early in the season, they've been kind of busy with a bunch of people who are trying to get this family tradition going.
Because it looks like it's going to be chillier Friday and Saturday next week and we didn't have anything going on today, so we thought we'd get it done earlier this year.
Rum River Tree Farm says they have already sold out about 100 trees. They have plenty more, though. They have much ready for the rest of the season. Santa Claus comes to Minnesota early this year. Wait till you see how the jolly old elf landed this weekend in Duluth. And just in time for the holidays, Shane Wells has more on the flower of the season and how they make them look like they do.
This is how you bring the party to a point setup right there. Party point setup. You can see we are taking you behind the scenes at Bachman's Greenhouse in Farmington where we're meeting the point setup artists. Hand paints and glitters, all of these beautiful creations. A lot more after the break. A lot more after the break.
Welcome back. The holiday season celebrations are already underway up in Duluth. The annual Christmas City of the North Parade took place over the weekend, and this year they celebrated 65 years. That is quite the milestone. By the way, the parade was founded by longtime Duluth resident Bob Rich, the father of our very own Jim Rich. The entire Rich family served as grand marshals for this year's parade. Way to go, Jimmy and family. Everyone, Santa knows how to make, we all know, Santa knows how to make a great entrance, and he may have topped this one himself this year. He arrived to the opening of the Bentleyville in Duluth by helicopter. This is the 20th anniversary of Bentleyville. The lights will be shining from 9:00 to 5:00 through Sunday, and from Sunday through Thursday, and from 5:00 to 10:00 on Friday and Saturday until the day after Christmas. They are one of the most popular symbols of the holidays, and at one greenhouse south of the metro, an artist is putting his unique touch on the poinsettia. Shane Wells gives us a closer look.
There are dozens of varieties of poinsettias, the popular holiday flower. These are not one of them. There's a little help with Mother Nature from the Bachman's team to create these really vibrant, colorful, glittered poinsettias. We wanted to learn a little bit more from the poinsettia artist, Brad Meyer. There's a real art to what you do. Do you want to show us kind of how you do this?
Yeah. So what we use, it's a liquid concentrate.
Okay.
And we mix it with 100% alcohol.
Oh.
And it won't burn the leaves.
Interesting.
Unless the paint is too strong.
Okay.
So, so I usually just start, it's just a little spray bottle, and you start going around. This variety, you got to lift up more of the leaves than some of them, just because there are so many of them, just to cover everything.
And when the leaves, the green leaves, get a little blue on them, that's okay or it comes off?
You won't even see it.
You won't even see it?
Nope, once it dries. It'll be just maybe a little darker, but it won't be the color blue like the white shows up.
Now, do you mix up these colors, then?
Yes. Actually, if you look at my cabinet over there, I have jugs above there. It's like a nine-to-one ratio between one part of the color.
Brad, this feels like a real science laboratory, I'm not going to lie.
It kind of looks like it at times. And what's kind of unique about us here is all ours are hand painted, where most other people, they have big conveyor belts, and they go through, and the paint comes on them.
And is that just to be more accurate with pinpointing where to get it?
Well.
Lifting up leaves, I guess.
We don't do 30,000 or 40,000 of them like some people do, so. So you're just trying to cover most of it up, and then I usually just go underneath a little bit. You'll never get it completely covered, but.
No, but you do a pretty darn good job, Brad. Now, when it comes to caring for these ones, I know you water in the soil, but if water gets on top, will it sort of?
Yeah, you should water from the bottom.
Water from the bottom?
Yeah, that'd be the best.
Okay. And you can't glitter when it's wet?
Nope, usually wait till it dries a little bit. So we'll move on to this one over here. So we just use a water-based glue for this.
Okay.
To put the glitter on. You'll notice a definite change. It really brings out the colors more, too.
But you know, this definitely catches the eye of the kids. I feel like this is like a troll. It's like it could be the head of a troll.
Kind of sprinkle the glitter on, and it really makes it look, it's kind of boring when it's just painted.
I like that you even appreciate the glitter.
Yep.
Just brings it to life. Look at that.
And we do about 4,000 to 5,000 of them.
Four or 5,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So you've got a lot to do, so we should let you get back to work. But Brad, we appreciate seeing a little behind the scenes.
Oh, no problem.
Of how this magic happens. Thank you so much.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you.
Bringing some color to your morning from the Bachman's Greenhouse in Farmington. We'll send it back to you in the Eden Prairie studios.
It's just amazing. That's all done by hand. Can you imagine that job? Where you're spray painting each leaf. We've got about 200 more for you there, Mr. Marler, just before lunch, if you don't mind getting those done.
I'll get it right on that.
My goodness.
Right on that.
They couldn't pay you enough.
Made me happy to hear about the Christmas City of the North Parade, though.
Oh, you're right.
Because I used to work up there.
Yes, you did.
In Duluth, and I was part of that parade.
Is there a Merv Griffin song here somewhere?
It is a Merv Griffin. "Christmas City, wonderful city, I've just made a copyright problem." But yeah, Merv Griffin sang this song. Because they, Jim Rich's, was his grandfather, must have been his grandfather, I think it was, owned the TV station at the time, and they decided, we're going to have a parade.
Is it KJBR?
KBJR, yeah.
And Jim is the J?
JR as part of that. I believe so, if I remember correctly. But yeah, they had sold the station long ago, before I even worked up there in Duluth. But everything stayed. The tradition stayed, the parade stayed, the station secretly organizes and runs the parade, and then puts it on TV as well. But yeah, long before Merv Griffin was famous, or at least a few years before, the Rich family knew him. They flew him out, and he recorded the song.
Oh, my gosh.
Then he got famous.
That's a great story.
Yeah, played along. I've got a few bootleg versions.
Is it on the Spotify?
I don't know.
I'm going to look it up.
You look it up. Christmas City.
I'll let you know.
That's the name of it.
Right.
I need a better version than the one I have. We, cloud cover is out the door for us this morning. That cloud cover isn't going anywhere today. We're in the 40s. We're staying in the 40s, a few 30s up north. You'll join forces at least into the lower 40s, if not just hanging in the upper 30s. And yes, the radar picture is very busy, but as I've said, since the wee hours of the morning, so much of that is not hitting the ground. At least a little bit more now is than was earlier. We've got some disorganized attempted light showers here and there. Most folks experiencing just, if you have any liquid at all, it's coming in the form of a couple of little sprinkles. There could be some light drips, maybe a trace to a hundredth of an inch or two. We've seen some folks up to seven hundredths of an inch in southwest Minnesota, but that's about all we can get. But to be honest, that's more than we've seen in general this month. Disorganized drips possible dayside. This is the cold front forming on up overnight tonight and getting its act together, and a line of showers will begin to move our way, but they'll also start to dry up again as they roll through between midnight and maybe 6:00 a.m. tomorrow morning with some attempted drips then as well, a couple of snowflakes up north. In the meantime, holding steady in the low to mid 40s for most, trying to get back to 40 in northern Minnesota. Cloud cover, a disorganized drip possible overnight tonight. Clouds linger with a better attempt at a shower, but it's still not that organized late tonight or into the early part of the commute tomorrow in the middle 30s. All of this is above average. And then for tomorrow, a very seasonable day. Morning cloud cover gives way to a clearing trend. Northwestern breezes get noticeable. 40 degrees for a high is seasonable, but the wind chills will stay in the 20s and 30s all day, and you'll just stay frozen across northern Minnesota. And then we all rise up for Wednesday for a possibly breezy but bright day, mild, a high right around 50, and we all go back down. There's the cold push. Once we change, we talked about this last week, once we change, we're there. Low 30s, barely struggling to get above freezing, if at all, on Thanksgiving Day and on Friday. At least it's sunny and quiet. I mean, you've got that going for you. You just have to make sure you got the sweaters going on again. And then mid 30s, bright but quiet, partly cloudy, heading into Saturday and Sunday. Thomas, any results?
I found plenty by Merv. I didn't find that particular song.
Yeah, it's a hard one. You got to find it. It's on YouTube everywhere here and there. Again, I have an old copy from Channel 6 when I was up there. That's, I think, maybe a, I don't even know, Sony MP3. What was before that? A phonograph. That's what it was.
Well, we'll keep digging. Thank you, sir. There's still much more to come here on the Fox 9 Morning News. She's a sweet talker, that Betty Crocker, no doubt about it. And now there's a musical all about the famed fictional character. We'll meet the Bettys right after the break. Welcome back. She is an icon of American cooking, and her roots are right here in Minnesota. Now, there's a new musical exploring the impact of Betty Crocker. I Am Betty is taking place onstage at the History Theater in St. Paul. Sadly, Betty is not a real person. Did you know that? She's a character whipped up by General Mills, who went on to become an icon. Two of the stars of I Am Betty joined Fox 9 Good Day earlier. They say the story shows not just how Betty Crocker was created, but how important that brand still is.
There is just a lot of personal stories that resonate and how Betty Crocker really helped women thrive in some way.
I Am Betty is onstage November 25th through December 23rd at the History Theater. You can get tickets at the official website. Looks great. Coming up, it's a hot contest which might cause you to turn up the heat in your house. How you can win money from a food company thanks to what you do with the thermostat. That's coming up next. At 11. Finally, here at 11 on this Monday, you could receive a pretty cool prize if you chill out about the thermostat. HotPockets wants to pay people to settle the thermostat debate in households. A recent survey by the company shows that 55% of parents disagree with their children on the temperature in the house. HotPockets is asking those who are up. You're watching Fox 9 All Day. Well, hi there, everyone. Thanks so much for joining us for All Day. I'm Tim Blotts. Developing today, the U.S. Supreme Court has denied Derek Chauvin's appeal of his conviction in the murder of George Floyd. Now, the justices did not comment, and the decision now means that Chauvin's conviction for his 22-and-a-half-year prison sentence remains. The lawyers for the former Minneapolis police officer argued that Chauvin was denied a fair trial because of pretrial publicity and concerns for violence in case there was an acquittal. Now, Chauvin was convicted of second-degree murder. He is also separately appealing his conviction on federal civil rights charges. Also today, new testing has found that elevated levels of lead exist in the drinking water of some St. Paul homes and buildings. 13 samples were above the EPA's action level for lead. Lead, of course, can cause some serious health problems, especially for pregnant women and young children. The city of St. Paul is hosting a public meeting. This is coming up tomorrow night at 5:00. Here's where it's at. It's at 1900 Rice Street. The city also has a website that you can visit to find out if you have lead service lines. St. Paul plans to remove all lead service lines during the next 10 years. Well, President Biden spends a portion of his birthday celebrating a longtime White House tradition. He used his presidential power to pardon two turkeys from the dinner plate, and both of these lucky birds, they hail from right here in Minnesota. Fox 9's Bill Keller has more from St. Paul.
We were first introduced to this pair of turkeys at the Minnesota State Fair when the public was given a chance to vote on their name. The birds, now known as Liberty and Belle, are Jennie-O turkeys from the Wilmer-based subsidiary of Hormel Foods. The company says that it was selected back in August to send the birds to Washington, D.C. In fact, following a long road trip, the pair checked into a suite at the Willard Intercontinental, where they made their first public debut at the luxury hotel near the White House yesterday. Officials say these turkeys should be well behaved for today's pardoning ceremony, since they've been receiving special treatment since they were hatched.
We've been intently raising them and getting them acclimated to some different things that they're probably not quite used to, whether that's sounds and noises and things like that.
The National Turkey Federation gave President Harry Truman the very first national Thanksgiving turkey back in 1947, but not all birds avoided the dinner table. It was George H.W. Bush, the first president to spare the turkeys with an official pardon. Now, it only makes sense that these two birds would come from Minnesota, since we produce more turkeys than any other state in the country. And unlike the fate of countless Thanksgiving birds, these turkeys will return to Minnesota, where they will live out the rest of their days here at the U of M Department of Poultry Science from the St. Paul campus. Bill Keller, Fox 9.
Always a great tradition, right? Okay, so we know this is Thanksgiving week, and the holiday travel rush, it's already on. In fact, our weather is pretty quiet around here, but there are some storms already. but there are some storms already causing some issues in other portions of the country. Right now, storms in the central and eastern U.S. are causing a number of flight delays and some cancellations, too. At MSP, at least five flights canceled so far today, and 43 have been delayed. Now, the Fox Weather team is warning people that tomorrow, this is going to be the worst day for travel this week, and TSA agents agree. They say the busiest days for them are on Tuesday and Wednesday. Airport officials are warning passengers to arrive earlier than they normally would.
I wasn't checking in for about an hour and a half, just checking in my bag alone, which that's normally a five-to-10-minute process.
Everything is going smoothly. He's worried about making the flight, but I have no worries.
We got here about like 30 minutes ago, actually, and we're already almost at security. We're just kind of like winging it.
I get it. Okay, if you're driving to your destination, AAA says the best time to leave is in the morning or after 6:00 to avoid the rush. Okay, ahead of the potential holiday season surge, Americans can order more free COVID-19 tests. The U.S. government is offering to send another four at-home virus tests all ahead of the typical surge during the holiday season. If you did not get the last free batch in September, you can get up to eight of them now. And this is easy to do. I just did it about an hour ago. You can order the free tests at covidtests.gov. Again, it's pretty simple. All right, in local headlines, a Metro Transit officer is recovering after the officer's squad car was struck by an SUV. State Patrol says the squad was southbound on Sixth Avenue in Minneapolis on Sunday when an SUV traveling westbound on Fourth Street hit the squad car. A witness called 911, and the officer was rushed to the hospital. The officer is expected to recover. The driver of that SUV was taken to the Hennepin County Jail after showing signs of impairment. Well, the light rail is fully up and running in Minneapolis again after a train derailed during the weekend. Metro Transit says a Green Line train was heading west between Niccollet Mall and the Warehouse District when it came off the tracks Saturday night. Investigators believe the train derailed after hitting a concrete object in the area. Thirteen passengers suffered some minor injuries. Let me correct that. Just three passengers suffered some injuries. The service was fully restored on Sunday morning. Okay, after a pretty nice weekend, we're going to start to cool things down a little bit later this week. We'll be right back with Keith Forecast here in a moment.
Afternoon. Meteorologist Keith Marler here. Live look out the door for me as I record this for you. We've got plenty of cloud cover going around the area. That cloud cover is going to be with us for the better part of the day. We've had a couple of spritzes and sprinkles that have rolled on by the area as a whole. On our minds today, the fact that it's just going to hang out with that cloud cover as we go on into the better part of our afternoon. Hanging in those clouds for the better part of the day today, a few spritzes and sprinkles try to evolve as we go on into the day, then back to seasonal conditions as we go on into tomorrow. The cloud cover lingers. Again, a couple of little spotty sprinkles, a little light spritz action here and there. We've seen it off and on already this morning and through the better part of the afternoon. We'll continue the same, letting it taper on off. Clouds linger overnight tonight as a cold front rolls on by. We could see a couple of weak, weak showers mixing in with a couple of snowflakes up north late tonight or early tomorrow morning. And then morning clouds give way to a clearing trend as we bust that up a little bit as the frontal boundary allows for some colder air to come seeping on in for tomorrow, reestablishing a more seasonal day for tomorrow. And then we've got a mild Wednesday in store, back to around 50, and then temperatures are going to plunge as we head on into the days ahead. For today, then, cloudy and certainly cooler. Temperatures really aren't going very far today. We've been parked in the lower 40s most of the day. We'll aim for those mid-40s into the afternoon. Again, a couple of stray spritzes pop here and there. Overnight tonight, we are looking at temperatures falling down into the 30s as we go on into the overnight hours tonight. Again, clouds linger just a bit. And then for tomorrow, a high only around 40, which is seasonal for this time of year. But morning cloud cover gives way to those gustier winds. A little bit of a chill there. Wind chills remain in the 20s and 30s pretty much all day long with that clearing trend. There's the bump up to around 50 as we go on into Wednesday, a big travel day for a lot of folks. Thanksgiving, though, yeah, back below average for the first time in a while. Highs should be in the upper 30s for a seasonal temperature towards the end of this work week or, excuse me, into the holiday weekend. But we're going for barely thawing, if that. Most of us staying frozen in through Thursday into Friday especially, Black Friday sunshine, 32. And then bright mid-30s as we remain cool and chilly heading into this upcoming Saturday and Sunday.
Boy, we sure are. Thanks, Keith. Okay, the Vikings, their five-game winning streak came to an end last night in Denver. The Vikings had control for most of the game, but some costly turnovers really hurt them. The Broncos, they were mostly kept to just field goals, but of course, Russell Wilson led the team to the game-winning touchdown in the final minutes of the game. He's good at that. It's the fourth straight win for Denver. Up next for the Vikings, though, is a divisional showdown. This will be on Monday Night Football, all against the Bears. But the Gopher women's basketball team, they're back on the court facing a hometown star, former Hopkins High School basketball star Paige Becker's. And the UConn Huskies, they battled the Gophers at the barn last night. The arena, it was packed for this game, especially with young fans flooding in, all wearing Becker's jersey. She says it was kind of surreal playing in her home state in the arena where her dreams of playing D1 basketball all began.
I grew up coming to games here, grew up watching a lot of players play here. And for me to be the one taking the court in a game I used to watch was kind of crazy, kind of surreal.
Yeah, she's so good, so talented. UConn beat Minnesota 62-44. This was the largest Gopher women's crowd since 2018. Hey, thanks for joining us for Fox Night All Day. It all continues right after this. You're watching Fox 9 All Day. Well, hi there, everyone. Thanks so much for joining us for All Day. I'm Tim Blotts. Developing today, the U.S. Supreme Court has denied Derek Chauvin's appeal of his conviction in the murder of George Floyd. Now, the justices did not comment, and the decision now means that Chauvin's conviction for his 22-and-a-half-year prison sentence remains. The lawyers for the former Minneapolis police officer argued that Chauvin was denied a fair trial because of pretrial publicity and concerns for violence in case there was an acquittal. Now, Chauvin was convicted of second-degree murder. He is also separately appealing his conviction on federal civil rights charges. Also today, new testing has found that elevated levels of lead exist in the drinking water of some St. Paul homes and buildings. Thirteen samples were above the EPA's action level for lead. Lead, of course, can cause some serious health problems, especially for pregnant women and young children. The city of St. Paul is hosting a public meeting. This is coming up tomorrow night at 5:00. Here's where it's at. It's at 1900 Rice Street. The city also has a website that you can visit to find out if you have lead service lines. St. Paul plans to remove all lead service lines during the next 10 years. Well, President Biden spends a portion of his birthday celebrating a longtime White House tradition. He used his presidential power to pardon two turkeys from the dinner plate. And both of these lucky birds, they hail from right here in Minnesota. Fox 9's Bill Keller has more from St. Paul.
We were first introduced to this pair of turkeys at the Minnesota State Fair when the public was given a chance to vote on their name. The birds, now known as Liberty and Belle, are Jennie-O turkeys from the Wilmer-based subsidiary of Hormel Foods. The company says that it was selected back in August to send the birds to Washington, D.C. In fact, following a long road trip, the pair checked into a suite at the Willard Intercontinental where they made their first public debut at the luxury hotel near the White House yesterday. Officials say these turkeys should be well behaved for today's pardoning ceremony since they've been receiving special treatment since they were hatched.
We've been intently raising them and getting them acclimated to some different things that they're probably not quite used to, whether that's sounds and noises and things like that.
The National Turkey Federation gave President Harry Truman the very first national Thanksgiving turkey back in 1947. But not all birds avoided the dinner table. It was George H.W. Bush, the first president to spare the turkeys with an official pardon. Now, it only makes sense that these two birds would come from Minnesota since we produce more turkeys than any other state in the country. And unlike the fate of countless Thanksgiving birds, these turkeys will return to Minnesota where they will live out the rest of their days here at the U of M Department of Poultry Science from the St. Paul campus. Bill Keller, Fox 9.
Always a great tradition, right? Okay, so we know this is Thanksgiving week and the holiday travel rush, it's already on. In fact, our weather is pretty quiet around here, but there are some storms already causing some issues in other portions of the country. Right now, storms in the central and eastern U.S. are causing a number of flight delays and some cancellations, too. At MSP, at least five flights canceled so far today, and 43 have been delayed. Now, the Fox Weather team is warning people that tomorrow, this is going to be the worst day for travel this week, and TSA agents agree. They say the busiest days for them are on Tuesday and Wednesday. Airport officials are warning passengers to arrive earlier than they normally would.
I wasn't checking in for about an hour and a half, just checking in my bag alone, which that's normally a five-to-10-minute process.
Everything is going smoothly. He's worried about making the flight, but I have no worries.
We got here about like 30 minutes ago, actually, and we're already almost at security. We're just kind of like winging it.
I get it. Okay, if you're driving to your destination, AAA says the best time to leave is in the morning or after 6:00 to avoid the rush. Okay, ahead of the potential holiday season surge, Americans can order more free COVID-19 tests. The U.S. government is offering to send another four at-home virus tests all ahead of the typical surge during the holiday season. If you did not get the last free batch in September, you can get up to eight of them now. And this is easy to do. I just did it about an hour ago. You can order the free tests at covidtests.gov. Again, it's pretty simple. All right, in local headlines, a Metro Transit officer is recovering after the officer's squad car was struck by an SUV. State Patrol says the squad was southbound on Sixth Avenue in Minneapolis on Sunday when an SUV traveling westbound on Fourth Street hit the squad car. A witness called 911, and the officer was rushed to the hospital. The officer is expected to recover. The driver of that SUV was taken to the Hennepin County Jail after showing signs of impairment. Well, the light rail is fully up and running in Minneapolis again after a train derailed during the weekend. Metro Transit says a Green Line train was heading west between Niccollet Mall and the Warehouse District when it came off the tracks Saturday night. Investigators believe the train derailed after hitting a concrete object in the area. Thirteen passengers suffered some minor injuries. Let me correct that. Just three passengers suffered some injuries. The service was fully restored on Sunday morning. Okay, after a pretty nice weekend, we're going to start to cool things down a little bit later this week. We'll be right back with Keith Forecast here in a moment.
Afternoon. Meteorologist Keith Marler here. Live look out the door for me as I record this for you. We've got plenty of cloud cover going around the area. That cloud cover is going to be with us for the better part of the day. We've had a couple of spritzes and sprinkles that have rolled on by the area as a whole. On our minds today, the fact that it's just going to hang out with that cloud cover as we go on into the better part of our afternoon. Hanging in those clouds for the better part of the day today, a few spritzes and sprinkles try to evolve as we go on into the day, then back to seasonable conditions as we go on into tomorrow. The cloud cover lingers. Again, a couple of little spotty sprinkles, a little light spritz action here and there. We've seen it off and on already this morning and through the better part of the afternoon. We'll continue the same, letting it taper on off. Clouds linger overnight tonight as a cold front rolls on by. We could see a couple of weak, weak showers mixing in with a couple of snowflakes up north late tonight or early tomorrow morning, and then morning clouds give way to a clearing trend as we bust that up a little bit as the frontal boundary allows for some colder air to come seeping on in for tomorrow, reestablishing a more seasonable day for tomorrow. And then we've got a mild Wednesday in the store, back to around 50, and then temperatures are going to plunge as we head on into the days ahead. For today, then, cloudy and certainly cooler. Temperatures really aren't going very far today. We've been parked in the lower 40s most of the day. We'll aim for those mid-40s into the afternoon. Again, a couple of stray spritzes pop here and there. Overnight tonight, we are looking at temperatures falling down into the 30s as we go on into the overnight hours tonight. Again, clouds linger just a bit, and then for tomorrow, a high only around 40, which is seasonable for this time of year. But morning cloud cover gives way to those gustier winds. Whew, a little bit of a chill there. Wind chills remain in the 20s and 30s pretty much all day long with that clearing trend. There's the bump up to around 50 as we go on into Wednesday, a big travel day for a lot of folks. Thanksgiving, though, yeah, back below average for the first time in a while. Highs should be in the upper 30s for a seasonable temperature towards the end of this work week, or excuse me, end of the holiday weekend, but we're going for barely thawing, if that. Most of us staying frozen in through Thursday into Friday especially. Black Friday sunshine, 32, and then bright mid-30s as we remain cool and chilly heading into this upcoming Saturday and Sunday.
Boy, we sure are. Thanks, Keith. Okay, the Vikings, their five-game winning streak came to an end last night in Denver. The Vikings had control for most of the game, but some costly turnovers really hurt them. The Broncos, they were mostly kept to just field goals, but of course, Russell Wilson led the team to the game-winning touchdown in the final minutes of the game. He's good at that. It's the fourth straight win for Denver. Up next for the Vikings, though, is a divisional showdown. This will be on Monday Night Football, all against the Bears. But the Gopher women's basketball team, they're back on the court facing a hometown star, former Hopkins High School basketball star, Paige Becker, and the UConn Huskies. They battled the Gophers at the barn last night. The arena, it was packed for this game, especially with young fans flooding in, all wearing Becker's jersey. She says it was kind of surreal playing in her home state in the arena where her dreams of playing D1 basketball all began.
I grew up coming to games here, grew up watching a lot of players play here, and for me to be the one taking the court in a game I used to watch was kind of crazy, kind of surreal.
Yeah, she's so good, so talented. UConn beat Minnesota 62-44. This was the largest Gopher women's crowd since 2018. Hey, thanks for joining us for Fox Night All Day. It all continues right after this.
You're up. You're watching Fox 9 All Day.
Well, hi there, everyone. Thanks so much for joining us for All Day. I'm Tim Blotts. Developing today, the U.S. Supreme Court has denied Derek Chauvin's appeal of his conviction in the murder of George Floyd. Now, the justices did not comment, and the decision now means that Chauvin's conviction for his 22-and-a-half-year prison sentence remains. The lawyers for the former Minneapolis police officer argued that Chauvin was denied a fair trial because of pretrial publicity and concerns for violence in case there was an acquittal. Now, Chauvin was convicted of second-degree murder. He is also separately appealing his conviction on federal civil rights charges. Also today, new testing has found that elevated levels of lead exist in the drinking water of some St. Paul homes and buildings. Thirteen samples were above the EPA's action level for lead. Lead, of course, can cause some serious health problems, especially for pregnant women and young children. The city of St. Paul is hosting a public meeting. This is coming up tomorrow night at 5 o'clock. Here's where it's at. It's at 1900 Rice Street. The city also has a website that you can visit to find out if you have lead service lines. St. Paul plans to remove all lead service lines during the next 10 years. Well, President Biden spends a portion of his birthday celebrating a longtime White House tradition. He used his presidential power to pardon two turkeys from the dinner plate, and both of these lucky birds, they hail from right here in Minnesota. Fox 9's Bill Keller has more from St. Paul.
We were first introduced to this pair of turkeys at the Minnesota State Fair when the public was given a chance to vote on their name. The birds, now known as Liberty and Belle, are Jennie-O turkeys from the Wilmer-based subsidiary of Hormel Foods. The company says that it was selected back in August to send the birds to Washington, D.C. In fact, following a long road trip, the pair checked into a suite at the Willard Intercontinental where they made their first public debut at the luxury hotel near the White House yesterday. Officials say these turkeys should be well behaved for today's pardoning ceremony since they've been receiving special treatment since they were hatched.
We've been intently raising them and getting them acclimated to some different things that they're probably not quite used to, whether that's sounds and noises and things like that.
The National Turkey Federation gave President Harry Truman the very first national Thanksgiving turkey back in 1947, but not all birds avoided the dinner table. It was George H.W. Bush, the first president who spared the turkeys with an official pardon. Now, it only makes sense that these two birds would come from Minnesota since we produce more turkeys than any other state in the country. And unlike the fate of countless Thanksgiving birds, these turkeys will return to Minnesota where they will live out the rest of their days here at the U of M Department of Poultry Science from the St. Paul campus. Bill Keller, Fox 9.
Always a great tradition, right? Okay, so we know this is Thanksgiving week, and the holiday travel rush, it's already on. In fact, our weather is pretty quiet around here, but there are some storms already causing some issues in other portions of the country. Right now, storms in the central and eastern U.S. are causing a number of flight delays and some cancellations, too. At MSP, at least five flights canceled so far today, and 43 have been delayed. Now, the Fox Weather team is warning people that tomorrow, this is going to be the worst day for travel this week, and TSA agents agree. They say the busiest days for them are on Tuesday and Wednesday. Airport officials are warning passengers to arrive earlier than they normally would.
I was checking in for about an hour and a half, just checking in my bag alone, which that's normally a five-to-10-minute process.
Everything is going smoothly. He's worried about making the flight, but I have no worries.
We got here about like 30 minutes ago, actually, and we're already almost at security. We're just kind of like winging it.
I get it. Okay, if you're driving to your destination, AAA says the best time to leave is in the morning or after 6 o'clock to avoid the rush. Okay, ahead of the potential holiday season surge, Americans can order more free COVID-19 tests. The U.S. government is offering to send another four at-home virus tests, all ahead of the typical surge during the holiday season. If you did not get the last free batch in September, you can get up to eight of them now, and this is easy to do. I just did it about an hour ago. You can order the free tests at covidtests.gov. Again, it's pretty simple. All right, in local headlines, a Metro Transit officer is recovering after the officer's squad car was struck by an SUV. State Patrol says the squad was southbound on Sixth Avenue in Minneapolis on Sunday when an SUV traveling westbound on Fourth Street hit the squad car. A witness called 911, and the officer was rushed to the hospital. The officer is expected to recover. The driver of that SUV was taken to the Hennepin County Jail after showing signs of impairment. Well, the light rail is fully up and running in Minneapolis again after a train derailed during the weekend. Metro Transit says a Green Line train was heading west between Niklet Mall and the Warehouse District when it came off the tracks Saturday night. Investigators believe the train derailed after hitting a concrete object in the area. Thirteen passengers suffered some minor injuries. Let me correct that. Just three passengers suffered some injuries. The service was fully restored on Sunday morning. Okay, after a pretty nice weekend, we're going to start to cool things down a little bit later this week. We'll be right back with Keith Forecast here in a moment.
Afternoon. Meteorologist Keith Marler here. Live look out the door for me as I record this for you. We've got plenty of cloud cover going around the area. That cloud cover is going to be with us for the better part of the day. We've had a couple of spritzes and sprinkles that have rolled on by the area as a whole. On our minds today, the fact that it's just going to hang out with that cloud cover as we go on into the better part of our afternoon. Hanging in those clouds for the better part of the day today, a few spritzes and sprinkles try to evolve as we go on into the day, then back to seasonable conditions as we go on into tomorrow. The cloud cover lingers. Again, a couple of little spotty sprinkles, a little light spritz action here and there. We've seen it off and on already this morning and through the better part of the afternoon. We'll continue the same, letting it taper on off. Clouds linger overnight tonight as a cold front rolls on by. We could see a couple of weak, weak showers mixing in with a couple of snowflakes up north late tonight or early tomorrow morning, and then morning clouds give way to a clearing trend as we bust that up a little bit as the frontal boundary allows for some colder air to come seeping on in for tomorrow, reestablishing a more seasonable day for tomorrow. And then we've got a mild Wednesday in the store, back to around 50, and then temperatures are going to plunge as we head on into the days ahead. For today, then, cloudy and certainly cooler. Temperatures really aren't going very far today. We've been parked in the lower 40s most of the day. We'll aim for those mid-40s into the afternoon. Again, a couple of stray spritzes pop here and there. Overnight tonight, we are looking at temperatures falling down into the 30s as we go on into the overnight hours tonight. Again, clouds linger just a bit, and then for tomorrow, a high only around 40, which is seasonable for this time of year. But morning cloud cover gives way to those gustier winds. Whew, a little bit of a chill there. Wind chills remain in the 20s and 30s pretty much all day long with that clearing trend. There's the bump up to around 50 as we go on into Wednesday, a big travel day for a lot of folks. Thanksgiving, though, yeah, back below average for the first time in a while. Highs should be in the upper 30s for a seasonable temperature towards the end of this work week, or excuse me, end of the holiday weekend, but we're going for barely thawing, if that. Most of us staying frozen in through Thursday into Friday especially. Black Friday sunshine, 32, and then bright mid-30s as we remain cool and chilly heading into this upcoming Saturday and Sunday.
Boy, we sure are. Thanks, Keith. Okay, the Vikings, their five-game winning streak came to an end last night in Denver. The Vikings had control for most of the game, but some costly turnovers really hurt them. The Broncos, they were mostly kept to just field goals, but of course, Russell Wilson led the team to the game-winning touchdown in the final minutes of the game. He's good at that. It's the fourth straight win for Denver. Up next for the Vikings, though, is a divisional showdown. This will be on Monday Night Football, all against the Bears. But the Gopher women's basketball team, they're back on the court facing a hometown star, former Hopkins High School basketball star, Paige Becker, and the UConn Huskies. They battled the Gophers at the barn last night. The arena, it was packed for this game, especially with young fans flooding in, all wearing Becker's jersey. She says it was kind of surreal playing in her home state in the arena where her dreams of playing D1 basketball all began.
I grew up coming to games here, grew up watching a lot of players play here, and for me to be the one taking the court in a game I used to watch was kind of crazy, kind of surreal.
Yeah, she's so good, so talented. UConn beat Minnesota 62-44. This was the largest Gopher women's crowd since 2018. Hey, thanks for joining us for Fox Night All Day. It all continues right after this.
You're watching Fox 9 All Day.
Well, hi there, everyone. Thanks so much for joining us for All Day. I'm Tim Blotts. Developing today, the U.S. Supreme Court has denied Derek Chauvin's appeal of his conviction in the murder of George Floyd. Now, the justices did not comment, and the decision now means that Chauvin's conviction for his 22-and-a-half-year prison sentence remains. The lawyers for the former Minneapolis police officer argued that Chauvin was denied a fair trial because of pretrial publicity and concerns for violence in case there was an acquittal. Now, Chauvin was convicted of second-degree murder. He is also separately appealing his conviction on federal civil rights charges. Also today, new testing has found that elevated levels of lead exist in the drinking water of some St. Paul homes and buildings. 13 samples were above the EPA's action level for lead. Lead, of course, can cause some serious health problems, especially for pregnant women and young children. The city of St. Paul is hosting a public meeting. This is coming up tomorrow night at 5 o'clock. Here's where it's at. It's at 1900 Rice Street. The city also has a website that you can visit to find out if you have lead service lines. St. Paul plans to remove all lead service lines during the next 10 years. Well, President Biden spends a portion of his birthday celebrating a longtime White House tradition. He used his presidential power to pardon two turkeys from the dinner plate, and both of these lucky birds, they hail from right here in Minnesota. Fox 9's Bill Keller has more from St. Paul.
We were first introduced to this pair of turkeys at the Minnesota State Fair when the public was given a chance to vote on their name. The birds, now known as Liberty and Belle, are Jennio turkeys from the Wilmer-based subsidiary of Hormel Foods. The company says that it was selected back in August to send the birds to Washington, D.C. In fact, following a long road trip, the pair checked into a suite at the Willard Intercontinental where they made their first public debut at the luxury hotel near the White House yesterday. Officials say these turkeys should be well behaved for today's pardoning ceremony since they've been receiving special treatment since they were hatched.
We've been intently raising them and getting them acclimated to some different things that they're probably not quite used to, whether that's sounds and noises and things like that.
The National Turkey Federation gave President Harry Truman the very first national Thanksgiving turkey back in 1947, but not all birds avoided the dinner table. It was George H.W. Bush, the first president to spare the turkeys with an official pardon. Now, it only makes sense that these two birds would come from Minnesota since we produce more turkeys than any other state in the country, and unlike the fate of countless Thanksgiving birds, these turkeys will return to Minnesota where they will live out the rest of their days here at the U of M Department of Poultry Science from the St. Paul campus. Bill Keller, Fox 9.
Always a great tradition, right? Okay, so we know this is Thanksgiving week and the holiday travel rush, it's already on. In fact, our weather is pretty quiet around here, but there are some storms already causing some issues in other portions of the country. Right now, storms in the central and eastern U.S. are causing a number of flight delays and some cancellations, too. At MSP, at least five flights canceled so far today, and 43 have been delayed. Now, the Fox Weather team is warning people that tomorrow, this is going to be the worst day for travel this week, and TSA agents agree. They say the busiest days for them are on Tuesday and Wednesday. Airport officials are warning passengers to arrive earlier than they normally would.
I was checking in for about an hour and a half, just checking in my bag alone, which that's normally a five to 10-minute process.
Everything is going smoothly. He's worried about making the flight, but I have no worries.
We got here about like 30 minutes ago, actually, and we're already almost at security. We're just kind of like winging it.
I get it. Okay, if you're driving to your destination, AAA says the best time to leave is in the morning or after 6 o'clock to avoid the rush. Okay, ahead of the potential holiday season surge, Americans can order more free COVID-19 tests. The U.S. government is offering to send another four at-home virus tests, all ahead of the typical surge during the holiday season. If you did not get the last free batch in September, you can get up to eight of them now, and this is easy to do. I just did it about an hour ago. You can order the free tests at covidtests.gov. Again, it's pretty simple. All right, in local headlines, a Metro Transit officer is recovering after the officer's squad car was struck by an SUV. State Patrol says the squad was southbound on 6th Avenue in Minneapolis on Sunday when an SUV traveling westbound on 4th Street hit the squad car. A witness called 911, and the officer was rushed to the hospital. The officer is expected to recover. The driver of that SUV was taken to the Hennepin County Jail after showing signs of impairment. Well, the light rail is fully up and running in Minneapolis again after a train derailed during the weekend. Metro Transit says a Green Line train was heading west between Niklet Mall in the Warehouse District when it came off the tracks Saturday night. Investigators believe the train derailed after hitting a concrete object in the area. 13 passengers suffered some minor injuries. Let me correct that, just three passengers suffered some injuries. The service was fully restored on Sunday morning. Okay, after a pretty nice weekend, we're going to start to cool things down a little bit later this week. We'll be right back with Keith Forecast here in a moment.
Afternoon. Meteorologist Keith Marler here. Live look out the door for me as I record this for you. We've got plenty of cloud cover going around the area. That cloud cover is going to be with us for the better part of the day. We've had a couple of spritzes and sprinkles that have rolled on by the area as a whole. On our minds today, the fact that it's just going to hang out with that cloud cover as we go on into the better part of our afternoon. Hanging in those clouds for the better part of the day today, a few spritzes and sprinkles try to evolve as we go on into the day, then back to seasonable conditions as we go on into tomorrow. The cloud cover lingers. Again, a couple of little spotty sprinkles, a little light spritz action here and there. We've seen it off and on already this morning and through the better part of the afternoon. Will continue the same, letting it taper on off. Clouds linger overnight tonight as a cold front rolls on by. We could see a couple of weak, weak showers mixing in with a couple of snowflakes up north late tonight or early tomorrow morning, and then morning clouds give way to a clearing trend as we bust that up a little bit as the frontal boundary allows for some colder air to come seeping on in for tomorrow, reestablishing a more seasonable day for tomorrow. And then we've got a mild Wednesday in the store, back to around 50, and then temperatures are going to plunge as we head on into the days ahead. For today, then, cloudy and certainly cooler. Temperatures really aren't going very far today. We've been parked in the lower 40s most of the day. We'll aim for those mid 40s into the afternoon. Again, a couple of stray spritzes pop here and there. Overnight tonight, we are looking at temperatures falling down into the 30s as we go on into the overnight hours tonight. Again, clouds linger just a bit, and then for tomorrow, a high only around 40, which is seasonable for this time of year. But morning cloud cover gives way to those gustier winds. Ooh, a little bit of a chill there. Wind chills remain in the 20s and 30s pretty much all day long with that clearing trend. There's the bump up to around 50 as we go on into Wednesday, a big travel day for a lot of folks. Thanksgiving, though, yeah, back below average for the first time in a while. Highs should be in the upper 30s for a seasonable temperature towards the end of this workweek or excuse me, end of the holiday weekend, but we're going for barely thawing, if that. Most of us staying frozen in through Thursday into Friday especially. Black Friday sunshine, 32, and then bright mid 30s as we remain cool and chilly heading into this upcoming Saturday and Sunday.
Boy, we sure are. Thanks, Keith. Okay, the Vikings, their five-game winning streak came to an end last night in Denver. The Vikings had control for most of the game, but some costly turnovers really hurt them. The Broncos, they were mostly kept to just field goals, but of course, Russell Wilson led the team to the game-winning touchdown in the final minutes of the game. He's good at that. It's the fourth straight win for Denver. Up next for the Vikings, though, is a divisional showdown. This will be on Monday Night Football, all against the Bears. But the Gopher women's basketball team, they're back on the court facing a hometown star, former Hopkins High School basketball star Paige Becker's and the UConn Huskies. They battled the Gophers at the barn last night. The arena, it was packed for this game, especially with young fans flooding in, all wearing Becker's jersey. She says it was kind of surreal playing in her home state in the arena where her dreams of playing D1 basketball all began.
I grew up coming to games here, grew up watching a lot of players play here, and for me to be the one taking the court in a game I used to watch was kind of crazy, kind of surreal.
Yeah, she's so good, so talented. UConn beat Minnesota 62-44. This was the largest Gopher women's crowd since 2018. Hey, thanks for joining us for Fox Night All Day. It all continues right after this.
See, that didn't, and our guys, even though we weren't making shots, I didn't think it affected us defensively, and that's a sign of a team that's really starting to figure it out.
Ben, what did you feel like were the defensive points of emphasis coming out of Missouri? And obviously, you liked the defensive effort, were those kind of, did they check the boxes you needed to?
Yeah, yeah, I think that, you know, and I liked us versus Missouri. I told our guys, like, I mean, 32 minutes was dang good basketball, you know? And I think the one thing with Missouri is, and I get it, everybody wants to look at the offensive side of the ball when they really cranked up their pressure and what we did or didn't do. If we get one of those stops in Missouri game, that's just as good as scoring it or converting offensively, you know what I mean? And so what I thought we did better is when we needed to get a stop, we found a way to get a stop, and then you extend the lead. I think we went on a 10-1 run. That's what I was looking for, is the response after the Missouri of, okay, offense, that is what it is, but like, if you get one more stop, if you have one clean defensive possession, you know, if you don't foul, if you contain the dribble, if you get one more rebound off your first-side defense, that changes the game, and we were able to learn from that and do that last game.
Go ahead. I've heard a little bit about the winners' week that you guys had in the offseason. Walk me through that and how much different that was than in the previous offseason.
Yeah, it's the first, well, it's the first one we've been able to do because we've had, we've had enough bodies to have like teams and do, do something like that. So I was, I was anxious to do it, and then I think we needed it because, again, this is the first time I felt like, and this is nothing against the last two years, but felt like, you know, we have a really competitive group that needs to be pushed in that direction because I think it would play out through the course of the year. And so really what it was, was, you know, I looked at our roster and I'm like, okay, I like our depth, I like our talent, I like our pieces. We have, you know, guys that have experience from different places, but if you look at like, how many guys have really won? And to me, especially as, you know, you're, you're building it throughout the year, finding ways to get these guys to understand that they're winners and to develop that mindset. And that's why I talked about the academic piece in the spring being so important to me because it translates, and especially when you haven't won. You've got to find wins every day in everything you do to build that self-confidence and to view yourself as a winner. And if you do that, that can win you a game or two, you know? And so we tried to do some stuff for the week where it was all about winning, finding ways to win, win a drill, win a competitive team thing, win by getting up super early in the morning and being on time, you know, like, and then winning by, okay, you do something in the morning, we still have practice in the afternoon where you still got to show up and win that, you still got to study hall, you got to show up and win that, like, there's no excuses for the whole week, and prove to them that like, winning is a habit, but we have to find ways to win each day because they don't have anything to fall back on, you know what I mean? And that, that again, that is a hard thing. It's like, you look at Missouri in the, in the game, you know, part of it is, we're still trying to find ways to win and confidence to win, and that's how you see something like that. That's a part of something like that, and why that happened is because an inexperienced team that's used to winning, those guys have complete confidence that they're going to find a way. Like, they don't know, but they're going to find a way to win, or they're going to make that one play. We're still going through that, so I just wanted to hit them with something early to challenge them, but to also give them something to fall back on that we can reference as the year goes on to say, no, no, you guys are winners, look what we've done, and like, all these things add up.
And there was a big kind of cardio component to it?
Yeah, yeah, because it's the mental toughness piece, right? It's understanding that, hey, you know, we want to get in shape, but, you know, you've got to be able to do stuff when you don't think you can, right? When your body's tired or... When your body's tired or you don't think you have any extra in you at all, can you still push through and find a way to win and be successful? And so it's that mental game of building that mental toughness, physical toughness, but it all comprises the winning. And then the other piece was, you know, it's not about each individual guy. So it's more about like the team. And it's like, okay, it's great if you make a drill or you make a sprint. But if, if the guy on your team doesn't, well, then we all fail. Cause that's how team basketball is. So trying to build that individual toughness, but then also know it's, it's not just about you. Like, you got to bring that guy in your group that's struggling, you got to pick him up. So we did stuff where the highest score didn't matter, it was all about the lowest score. So like, you put a little bit of pressure on the guy that has the lowest score. But then you also, it's a team thing where those other guys are trying to fight for that guy, to push for that extra rep of whatever it is.
What month is that in?
That was September, I believe. Yeah, September, because we did it right before the first, the week, right before official practice. Believe I'm right.
Dawson, just one more. I'm sorry. Dawson credited that as kind of the reason that he feels like he's in the best shape.
Oh, really? I didn't know that.
Have you seen that?
Yeah, yeah. Well, then now it's working. Uh, no, I'm telling you, like, it's, um, I just want everybody to understand, like, these kids like are so, um, it's so cool to work with them because that age of like 18 to 22, 23, you can be so impactful with just stuff like that. And I'm not saying that like I'm impactful, but my point is like, just something little as that is now giving him confidence where now in his mind, he thinks he's in the best shape of his life, but he really is. Um, but that, that, that week proved to him that, A, through tough stuff you have more, but then also like, you made it through, so it tells you you're, you're damn good, right? Or you're in good shape and that confidence helps. And again, I told him in one of the timeouts, like, it's good, that week's going to pay off at some point this year because we're going to be able to reference it back. And I keep going back to that because when you haven't had success on a big level at this stage, it's hard. Like, I can, I can try to push confidence in you all I want, but you have to have a reference point that you can go back to and say, you know what, he's right. Right? Whether that's a high school state championship, whether that's winning at your previous school. And we have one guy at this level that has had that. And so to, to give them that, um, so that's, that's good. I'm glad he, glad he feels that. But, cause he is, I mean, he's worked his butt off. And, and again, it's also helped when you, when you have guys healthy, we're able to have competitive practices. So now you can go up and down and that helps everybody. Whereas before, you, you have controlled practices, you do stuff in half court. It's not competitive, like that cardio stuff does hurt. But now we've been able to compete and go five on five and do trips and, you know, that's a good thing.
I think he, he mentioned that playing at a faster pace, the winner, winners week and the condition that they did, preparing to play that way.
Yeah, yeah, no, it did. Um, again, it, um, uh, you know,
Was that, was that, you envisioned that like, okay, we can get in the best shape with this winners week and then we can play faster?
Yeah, because it's all, it's, it's all goes back to habits, right? And everybody talks about playing fast, but it's the discipline to play fast. Like, Pharrell, Dawson, Parker, Jack, those guys got to know, you know, you got to sprint the court 10 times knowing you might get a layup twice. But you have the discipline to do it the other eight, right? Or knowing that like you running the floor will open it up for everybody else, even if it doesn't benefit you in that selfishness of doing that. But it's the discipline that we did in winners week of like, regardless of circumstance, you got to do your job, you got to run the floor, you got to push the pace. But then to give them the confidence of, hey, when you're in really good shape, you know what you want to do as a player, you want to run because you're in good shape. You know what I mean? Like, when, when you're not in good shape, the last thing you want to do is constantly have to play fast because you're fatigued. So it's giving them that confidence of like, fellas, you feel good and you want to run because your body's in shape. And part of that started at, at winners week.
When did you come up with the belt? Close game?
Uh,
Keith, that was game one, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I had that back pocket for a while. Um, no, I've, I've tried to come up with something, you know, every year. And, and that one was, it was kind of along the lines of, of winners week a little bit. Um, but, you know, and that's awarded to, it's not necessarily the guy that's had the leading stat line. Um, it's to who our staff feels like for that game, kind of embodied being a warrior, whatever that meant. Um, and I just think it's good. I think I want everybody to feel like to win, it takes everybody. And it takes everybody doing the little stuff at a high level. And just, I want to acknowledge guys that like, it's not necessarily about Dawson who might get all the highlights or Pharrell or Braden or whoever. That's important, but every single person in our program can impact winning. And it shows that like, we care about the details here. So, uh, kind of like, I don't know if you guys watched wrestling, but the Ultimate Warrior, that was my guy. Yeah, that was my guy. So Ultimate Warrior and just kind of a team, team bonding things. The guys have kind of dug it a little bit, so.
See, instead of using Denzel for your commitment, you should have used Ultimate Warrior.
Ultimate Warrior?
Yeah. I'm disappointed.
Yeah, no, but the only thing is like, I don't have to reference Denzel because everybody knows who he is. Like, if I said the Ultimate Warrior, our guys would have zero clue, you know? And then you got to do the breakdown video and explain and all that.
What's the scout on Arkansas?
Uh, they are, it's, it's, it's a challenging game from the standpoint of just personnel. The last game, they legitimately went five guards. And so you like, like, you want that in the, in the preseason because you want to challenge your defense to, to have to defend the ball one on one. The, the hard part is your, it's not realistic for, uh, you know, Dawson, Pharrell, Parker, for when we play against teams that have traditional bigs. So you, it's kind of that give and take. But I like it because they're going to, they're going to force us to defend one on one, which we have to continue to get better at. Um, they're aggressive downhill team. They've really upgraded their roster from last year. They've got a couple of transfers, one from Bethune who's really good. I mean, they're shooting it at like 42% from three. Um, so, I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's a tough group. They're super competitive, um, but it's, it's not the team we played last year. They, they definitely elevated their talent level. And so they're going to definitely challenge us off the bounce. Um, we got to defend one on one, we got to own the paint more than ever. We got to impose our will, even if there's funky lineups. Um, and we got to defend without fouling because they're aggressive, they get downhill.
It seems like, um, you know, every team that you'll play, especially the non-conference schedule, they have like these veteran guards, some of them have been around forever, like fifth year, you know? How do you handle that with the guards that you have? You have some experience, but then you also have the Camerons and, and like Bradens who are young.
Hmm.
But you, they're in there a lot playing against veteran guards. Like the Missouri game, I think in the second half, you, you saw that where I think Caleb Grill or some of those guys just, you know, they kind of know what to do and they just did it.
Yeah.
Some of your younger guards are learning that.
Yeah, I want that, I want that. Um, because you're always, I'm always thinking, you know, big picture, right? And sometimes you got to be thrown to the fire and, and you got to, you got to be forced to respond. And, and those guys want that, like Cam wants that challenge, Braden wants that challenge, Josh wants that challenge, Mike, who's kind of been an offensive guy, has really, really since the summer embraced and trying to flip the narrative where now he can defend, you know, Elijah wants that, there's a hunger for it. And so, um, I'm glad, I want our guys to be challenged. I want, um, you know, our perimeter to have to, to, to go through that because it's only going to make us better. And, um, and you hope in your non-conference, that's what the, the teams can bring is with the portal and with COVID that, that you're going against experienced teams because, you know, we want to win and be competitive in our league. And so, you know, to put our guys through that early, um, you know, I'm hoping it continues.
Anything else for Coach?
Good. All right, appreciate it.
I don't think you for Ultimate Warrior, Ben, I'm sorry.
Oh man, I was a huge student right after school. Came home, 3 o'clock.
Game was on. So did Roddy Roddy Piper? Did you cry when he lost to Sargent Slaughter?
I wouldn't like that, no. I liked it, don't get me wrong.
I mean, like, that was, that was,
Were you crying?
Yes.
Joshua Olajuwon, questions for you to answer.
Ben was talking about winners week in September. What did you guys individually take from that experience?
Basically, one of the week was just like a week that was supposed to push us conditioning wise. And I feel like it was hard on everyone. So it was more of a mental thing, just pushing through it. Not giving up, just helping picking up your brothers up. So yeah, that's what I took from it.
Yeah, it was a, I don't know. It was a fun week, actually. You know, it's kind of something that I think you kind of look at and you kind of dread. You're like, oh, I gotta get up at 5:00 AM and go do whatever, you know, the heck they tell me to do conditioning wise. But the last night, we actually, we actually stayed overnight here Thursday night, the whole team. Guys were kind of sleeping all over the place. I remember Braden Carrington was in the barn loss. Dawson slept at half court and his blow up mattress deflated and he was just sleeping on the ground at half court. So I took a visitor's locker room because there's air conditioning. So that was the, that was a veteran play by myself. But you know, the, the conditioning and that kind of stuff is tough, but it's, it's more of that kind of mental battle. And the biggest thing is, you know, everybody's going through it. So how can you pick somebody else up? And I think that's a big, you know, that's a big trait to have as a team, you know? Not everything's going to be going great for, you know, individuals. How can you pick somebody else up? So that's the biggest thing I took.
Yep.
The mental side of it obviously is huge, but like physically prepared you guys to play faster, like better shape. You know, the style of play that you have now, I mean, if you guys weren't conditioning like that early on, who knows if you would have been able to do it.
Yeah, I think we knew from, you know, early in the season that, you know, we would kind of have not a different style, but just maybe add something on, you know, with guys like Elijah and Mike and obviously Josh running the floor. And, you know, we have a lot of athletes and we have the depth, you know? I think the last two years you look at the depth and it's, it's hard to, you know, want to push the pace when, you know, a guy like Talan had to play 40 minutes last year and, you know, he did a great job in his role, but it's just like, you know, we got more depth. We got more opportunities. So I think there was a focus this year on getting guys in shape and knowing that, you know, we're able to push the floor and get out in transition. We got, you know, a lot of really good athletes. Like you look at Isaiah, what he's been doing in transition is so long athletic, like, you know, we got guys that can run the floor. We got guys that can make three points in transition. We got guys that can finish at the rim. So why would you not want to push it a little bit?
How do you guys feel like you guys were defensively on Saturday after Missouri?
I feel like me personally, I feel like I took a step up defensively. I feel like our issue of that game was probably just energy. I feel like we stick to the plan. I mean, we did our job. So, so that's how I feel about it.
Yeah, I think we just had a sour taste in our mouth after Missouri. Just that wasn't, nobody was happy about it, you know? So, you know, we wanted to bounce back probably better than the way we did. But at the end of the day, we did take care of business and, you know, were able to do what we, we set out to do. But I thought we were solid defensively. We could have been better in transition D. That was probably the, the part that, you know, me and my, kind of my take from the game was is we could have been better transition D. But I think with the kind of the personnel and the guys we got, that when we get somebody in the half court and we defend, I think we're, you got a lot of length, a lot of size, a lot of athleticism. We can really make people work to, to get buckets. And as long as we rebound work, it can be a pretty good half court defensive team.
Ben talked about maybe the toughest area to rotate guys is in the front court. You know, a lot of different styles and bodies and, you know, the Missouri game maybe didn't play as much in the second half. And then, you know, other games, you've, you've, huge impact, the energy and how do you just gauge that? I guess even both of you, just when there's so many, the depth you talked about, there's so many guys. Maybe one night guy plays a lot, another maybe not as much.
Yeah, I think we talk about sacrifice a lot in, in the locker room. And any team that wants to do something worthwhile has to sacrifice, whether it's minutes, whether it's, you know, whatever it possibly be. It just sacrifices a whole. And, you know, I think at this kind of latter end of my career, I know that I want to win. You know, I've, I've been a part of winning. I've won four conference championships in college. I've done in high school as well. And I know that winning is really hard, especially in this league. And it's, it's hard to win games. And at the end of the day, I, I'm here for a reason because I trust the, the coaching staff and, and the people that have put me in the position to be where I am. And I'm just going to do whatever it takes to, to help win, you know, whether that's, you know, talking to a guy like Pharrell Payne on the bench about, you know, a little, you know, younger guy mistake that he could have made better. Or given Dawson that kind of, you know, credit because we know Dawson's a really good player and he, he needs to play confidently. Or, or whether that's being on the court and, you know, trusting my game. So, you know, at the end of the day, I think as a competitor, you want to compete and you want to be out there on the court. And I think I'd be lying if, you know, you said you didn't want to, you know, be in a basketball game. But at the end of the day, it's, it's whatever you can do to kind of help, help your team win a game. And, and that's what I'm about. And that's how I was raised and how I've always, always played. So I'm about winning. As long as there's a W in the column.
Oh, the minutes though, that's currency, man. That's, that's what it's all about, right? How many minutes you can get on the court. Is that one of the hardest transitions is, you know, because sometimes you're going to play 30 and sometimes you're going to play 20. And I mean, is that one of the hardest adjustments is to figure out game to game, what's expected of you and, and, and figure out where you fit in?
Oh, yeah. I mean, but like Ben talked about yesterday in practice, being bought all the way in just when your number is called, is being ready, being prepared and not knowing how much you're going to play, but knowing when you're getting, you're going to give your all. So I mean, like, I don't feel like nobody in our locker room really cares about how much they play, but the biggest goal is just like winning games. Like, yeah.
What's the scouting report on Arkansas Pine Bluff?
Yeah, you know, we like, we know they like to take a lot of threes. They, they are not exceptionally great in the, the half court two point field goal percentage. I think if you look at the numbers, but they want to take a lot of threes and they get to the follow line a lot. So I think the biggest thing is playing with length and then just trying to stay down on fakes. You know, I think we got so many athletes that want to make, you know, big level plays, but sometimes you just got to stay down and be disciplined. So I think if we do that in our half court and then, you know, we play transition defense as a whole, we'll be able to, you know, limit some of those threes. I think they, they want to get threes up quick and they want, they want to take a lot of them. So we kind of want to slow them down and then just run our offense. If we, if we stay true to our offense and, and do what we want to do, we feel like we'll be able to get really good shots.
Oh, is everybody expected to shoot the three, except for the big guy from Washington State, the football player? Is everybody expected to be able to shoot the three on this team? Is that where the game is at?
Yeah, I mean, everybody worked on a gym shot in Parker. Like he could stretch the floor. So I mean, everyone could shoot the ball. So all five guys, especially with Dawson at the five.
You guys are local guys, just home, home for Thanksgiving with the family? Are you going to invite any teammates or how does it work?
My family's going out to, my, my dad's brother lives in San Francisco, so they're going out early for, for Thanksgiving. So I think me and my brother are probably going to hit the grandparents up and see if they'll make us a meal. But that's the, the nice part of being local.
Yeah, I probably just want to have a little, a little dinner with the family.
What do you guys think of Dawson's haircut?
Well, the funny thing is, is I was, I was in my living room, just sitting on the couch, just watching some hoops. And he walked in with a hat on and he, he had like the hat fully on and I just knew something was weird. I like, I was like, what's, and he took the hat off and he, I think he said that he was just sitting in the chair and he got his normal haircut. And then he was like, ah, screw it, I'll do it all. And like, there was like somebody waiting for like 45 minutes. And he said he paid the barber double. So that's, that's fair then.
Any, any significance? Was that you and Isaiah in Missouri game, pink shoes? Any significance there?
Nah, Isaiah was just, he's, he's a KD guy. I know when the shoes came out, he didn't even know they came out. And he's like, got like three or four pairs of the exact same shoe. And I sent it to him and they were sold out in my size, but they had them in his size because he's an 18. So they had plenty in his size. And so he bought them and then I had to go to like a secondhand website to buy them too. And then we're like, all right, we'll wear them together. So I've always thought the pink kind of goes with the white. I don't know. Yeah, no, nothing crazy.
My son's jealous, man.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
...causing some issues in other portions of the country. Right now, storms in the central and eastern U.S. are causing a number of flight delays and some cancellations, too. At MSP, at least five flights canceled so far today, and 43 have been delayed. Now, the Fox Weather team is warning people that tomorrow, this is going to be the worst day for travel this week, and TSA agents agree. They say the busiest days for them are on Tuesday and Wednesday. Airport officials are warning passengers to arrive earlier than they normally would.
I was checking in for about an hour and a half, just checking in my bag alone, which that's normally a five to 10-minute process.
Everything is going smoothly. He's worried about making the flight, but I have no worries.
We got here about like 30 minutes ago, actually, and we're already almost at security. We're just kind of like winging it.
I get it. Okay, if you're driving to your destination, AAA says the best time to leave is in the morning or after 6 o'clock to avoid the rush. Okay, ahead of the potential holiday season surge, Americans can order more free COVID-19 tests. The U.S. government is offering to send another four at-home virus tests, all ahead of the typical surge during the holiday season. If you did not get the last free batch in September, you can get up to eight of them now, and this is easy to do. I just did it about an hour ago. You can order the free test at covidtests.gov. Again, it's pretty simple. All right, in local headlines, a Metro Transit officer is recovering after the officer's squad car was struck by an SUV. State Patrol says the squad was southbound on 6th Avenue in Minneapolis on Sunday when an SUV traveling westbound on 4th Street hit the squad car. A witness called 911, and the officer was rushed to the hospital. The officer is expected to recover. The driver of that SUV was taken to the Hennepin County Jail after showing signs of impairment. Well, the light rail is fully up and running in Minneapolis again after a train derailed during the weekend. Metro Transit says a Green Line train was heading west between Niklet Mall and the Warehouse District when it came off the tracks Saturday night. Investigators believe the train derailed after hitting a concrete object in the area. Thirteen passengers suffered some minor injuries. Let me correct that, just three passengers suffered some injuries. The service was fully restored on Sunday morning. Okay, after a pretty nice weekend, we're going to start to cool things down a little bit later this week. We'll be right back with Keith Forecast here in a moment. Afternoon. Meteorologist Keith Marler here. Live look out the door for me as I record this for you. We've got plenty of cloud cover going around the area. That cloud cover is going to be with us for the better part of the day. We've had a couple of spritzes and sprinkles that have rolled on by the area as a whole. On our minds today, the fact that it's just going to hang out with that cloud cover as we go on into the better part of our afternoon. Hanging in those clouds for the better part of the day today, a few spritzes and sprinkles try to evolve as we go on into the day, then back to seasonable conditions as we go on into tomorrow. The cloud cover lingers. Again, a couple of little spotty sprinkles, a little light spritz action here and there. We've seen it off and on already this morning and through the better part of the afternoon. We'll continue the same, letting it taper on off. Clouds linger overnight tonight as a cold front rolls on by. We could see a couple of weak, weak showers mixing in with a couple of snowflakes up north late tonight or early tomorrow morning, and then morning clouds give way to a clearing trend as we bust that up a little bit as the frontal boundary allows for some colder air to come seeping on in for tomorrow, reestablishing a more seasonable day for tomorrow. And then we've got a mild Wednesday in the store, back to around 50, and then temperatures are going to plunge as we head on into the days ahead. For today, then, cloudy and certainly cooler. Temperatures really aren't going very far today. We've been parked in the lower 40s most of the day. We'll aim for those mid 40s into the afternoon. Again, a couple of stray spritzes pop here and there. Overnight tonight, we are looking at temperatures falling down into the 30s as we go on into the overnight hours tonight. Again, clouds linger just a bit, and then for tomorrow, a high only around 40, which is seasonable for this time of year. But morning cloud cover gives way to those gustier winds. Ooh, a little bit of a chill there. Wind chills remain in the 20s and 30s pretty much all day long with that clearing trend. There's the bump up to around 50 as we go on into Wednesday, a big travel day for a lot of folks. Thanksgiving, though, yeah, back below average for the first time in a while. Highs should be in the upper 30s for a seasonable temperature towards the end of this workweek or excuse me, end of the holiday weekend, but we're going for barely thawing, if that. Most of us staying frozen in through Thursday into Friday especially. Black Friday sunshine, 32, and then bright mid 30s as we remain cool and chilly heading into this upcoming Saturday and Sunday. Boy, we sure are. Thanks, Keith. Okay, the Vikings, their five-game winning streak came to an end last night in Denver. The Vikings had control for most of the game, but some costly turnovers really hurt them. The Broncos, they were mostly kept to just field goals, but of course, Russell Wilson led the team to the game-winning touchdown in the final minutes of the game. He's good at that. It's the fourth straight win for Denver. Up next for the Vikings, though, is a divisional showdown. This will be on Monday Night Football, all against the Bears. But the Gopher women's basketball team, they're back on the court facing a hometown star, former Hopkins High School basketball star Paige Becker's, and the UConn Huskies, they battled the Gophers at the barn last night. The arena, it was packed for this game, especially with young fans flooding in, all wearing Becker's jersey. She says it was kind of surreal playing in her home state in the arena where her dreams of playing D1 basketball all began.
I grew up coming to games here, grew up watching a lot of players play here, and for me to be the one taking the court in a game I used to watch was kind of crazy, kind of surreal.
Yeah, she's so good, so talented. UConn beat Minnesota 62-44. This was the largest Gopher women's crowd since 2018. Hey, thanks for joining us for Fox Night All Day. It all continues right after this.
You're watching Fox 9 All Day.
Well, hi there, everyone. Thanks so much for joining us for All Day. I'm Tim Blotts. Developing today, the U.S. Supreme Court has denied Derek Chauvin's appeal of his conviction in the murder of George Floyd. Now, the justices did not comment, and the decision now means that Chauvin's conviction for his 22-and-a-half-year prison sentence remains. The lawyers for the former Minneapolis police officer argued that Chauvin was denied a fair trial because of pretrial publicity and concerns for violence in case there was an acquittal. Now, Chauvin was convicted of second-degree murder. He is also separately appealing his conviction on federal civil rights charges. Also today, new testing has found that elevated levels of lead exist in the drinking water of some St. Paul homes and buildings. Thirteen samples were above the EPA's action level for lead. Lead, of course, can cause some serious health problems, especially for pregnant women and young children. The city of St. Paul is hosting a public meeting. This is coming up tomorrow night at 5 o'clock. Here's where it's at. It's at 1900 Rice Street. The city also has a website that you can visit to find out if you have lead service lines. St. Paul plans to remove all lead service lines during the next 10 years. Well, President Biden spends a portion of his birthday celebrating a longtime White House tradition. He used his presidential power to pardon two turkeys from the dinner plate, and both of these lucky birds, they hail from right here in Minnesota. Fox 9's Bill Keller has more from St. Paul.
We were first introduced to this pair of turkeys at the Minnesota State Fair when the public was given a chance to vote on their name. The birds, now known as Liberty and Belle, are Jennie-O turkeys from the Wilmer-based subsidiary of Hormel Foods. The company says that it was selected back in August to send the birds to Washington, D.C. In fact, following a long road trip, the pair checked into a suite at the Willard Intercontinental where they made their first public debut at the luxury hotel near the White House yesterday. Officials say these turkeys should be well behaved for today's pardoning ceremony since they've been receiving special treatment since they were hatched.
We've been intently raising them and getting them acclimated to some different things that they're probably not quite used to, whether that's sounds and noises and things like that.
The National Turkey Federation gave President Harry Truman the very first national Thanksgiving turkey back in 1947, but not all birds avoided the dinner table. It was George H.W. Bush, the first president who spared the turkeys with an official pardon. Now, it only makes sense that these two birds would come from Minnesota since we produce more turkeys than any other state in the country, and unlike the fate of countless Thanksgiving birds, these turkeys will return to Minnesota where they will live out the rest of their days here at the U of M Department of Poultry Science from the St. Paul campus. Bill Keller, Fox 9.
Always a great tradition, right? Okay, so we know this is Thanksgiving week, and the holiday travel rush, it's already on. In fact, our weather is pretty quiet around here, but there are some storms already causing some issues in other portions of the country. Right now, storms in the central and eastern U.S. are causing a number of flight delays and some cancellations, too. At MSP, at least five flights canceled so far today, and 43 have been delayed. Now, the Fox Weather team is warning people that tomorrow, this is going to be the worst day for travel this week, and TSA agents agree. They say the busiest days for them are on Tuesday and Wednesday. Airport officials are warning passengers to arrive earlier than they normally would.
I was checking in for about an hour and a half, just checking in my bag alone, which that's normally a five to 10-minute process.
Everything is going smoothly. He's worried about making the flight, but I have no worries.
We got here about like 30 minutes ago, actually, and we're already almost at security. We're just kind of like winging it.
I get it. Okay, if you're driving to your destination, AAA says the best time to leave is in the morning or after 6 o'clock to avoid the rush. Okay, ahead of the potential holiday season surge, Americans can order more free COVID-19 tests. The U.S. government is offering to send another four at-home virus tests, all ahead of the typical surge during the holiday season. If you did not get the last free batch in September, you can get up to eight of them now, and this is easy to do. I just did it about an hour ago. You can order the free test at covidtests.gov. Again, it's pretty simple. All right, in local headlines, a Metro Transit officer is recovering after the officer's squad car was struck by an SUV. State Patrol says the squad was southbound on 6th Avenue in Minneapolis on Sunday when an SUV traveling westbound on 4th Street hit the squad car. A witness called 911, and the officer was rushed to the hospital. The officer is expected to recover. The driver of that SUV was taken to the Hennepin County Jail after showing signs of impairment. Well, the light rail is fully up and running in Minneapolis again after a train derailed during the weekend. Metro Transit says a Green Line train was heading west between Niklet Mall and the Warehouse District when it came off the tracks Saturday night. Investigators believe the train derailed after hitting a concrete object in the area. Thirteen passengers suffered some minor injuries. Let me correct that, just three passengers suffered some injuries. The service was fully restored on Sunday morning. Okay, after a pretty nice weekend, we're going to start to cool things down a little bit later this week. We'll be right back with Keith Forecast here in a moment. Afternoon. Meteorologist Keith Marler here. Live look out the door for me as I record this for you. We've got plenty of cloud cover going around the area. That cloud cover is going to be with us for the better part of the day. We've had a couple of spritzes and sprinkles that have rolled on by the area as a whole. On our minds today, the fact that it's just going to hang out with that cloud cover as we go on into the better part of our afternoon. Hanging in those clouds for the better part of the day today, a few spritzes and sprinkles try to evolve as we go on into the day, then back to seasonable conditions as we go on into tomorrow. The cloud cover lingers. Again, a couple of little spotty sprinkles, a little light spritz action here and there. We've seen it off and on already this morning and through the better part of the afternoon. We'll continue the same, letting it taper on off. Clouds linger overnight tonight as a cold front rolls on by. We could see a couple of weak, weak showers mixing in with a couple of snowflakes up north late tonight or early tomorrow morning, and then morning clouds give way to a clearing trend as we bust that up a little bit as the frontal boundary allows for some colder air to come seeping on in for tomorrow, reestablishing a more seasonable day for tomorrow. And then we've got a mild Wednesday in the store, back to around 50, and then temperatures are going to plunge as we head on into the days ahead. For today, then, cloudy and certainly cooler. Temperatures really aren't going very far today. We've been parked in the lower 40s most of the day. We'll aim for those mid 40s into the afternoon. Again, a couple of stray spritzes pop here and there. Overnight tonight, we are looking at temperatures falling down into the 30s as we go on into the overnight hours tonight. Again, clouds linger just a bit, and then for tomorrow, a high only around 40, which is seasonable for this time of year. But morning cloud cover gives way to those gustier winds. Ooh, a little bit of a chill there. Wind chills remain in the 20s and 30s pretty much all day long with that clearing trend. There's the bump up to around 50 as we go on into Wednesday, a big travel day for a lot of folks. Thanksgiving, though, yeah, back below average for the first time in a while. Highs should be in the upper 30s for a seasonable temperature towards the end of this workweek or excuse me, end of the holiday weekend, but we're going for barely thawing, if that. Most of us staying frozen in through Thursday into Friday especially. Black Friday sunshine, 32, and then bright mid 30s as we remain cool and chilly heading into this upcoming Saturday and Sunday. Boy, we sure are. Thanks, Keith. Okay, the Vikings, their five-game winning streak came to an end last night in Denver. The Vikings had control for most of the game, but some costly turnovers really hurt them. The Broncos, they were mostly kept to just field goals, but of course, Russell Wilson led the team to the game-winning touchdown in the final minutes of the game. He's good at that. It's the fourth straight win for Denver. Up next for the Vikings, though, is a divisional showdown. This will be on Monday Night Football, all against the Bears. But the Gopher women's basketball team, they're back on the court facing a hometown star, former Hopkins High School basketball star Paige Becker's, and the UConn Huskies, they battled the Gophers at the barn last night. The arena, it was packed for this game, especially with young fans flooding in, all wearing Becker's jersey. She says it was kind of surreal playing in her home state in the arena where her dreams of playing D1 basketball all began.
I grew up coming to games here, grew up watching a lot of players play here, and for me to be the one taking the court in a game I used to watch was kind of crazy, kind of surreal.
Yeah, she's so good, so talented. UConn beat Minnesota 62-44. This was the largest Gopher women's crowd since 2018. Hey, thanks for joining us for Fox Night All Day. It all continues right after this. Well, hi there, everyone. Thanks so much for joining us for All Day. I'm Tim Blotts. Developing today, the U.S. Supreme Court has denied Derek Chauvin's appeal of his conviction in the murder of George Floyd. Now, the justices did not comment, and the decision now means that Chauvin's conviction for his 22-and-a-half-year prison sentence remains. The lawyers for the former Minneapolis police officer argued that Chauvin was denied a fair trial because of pretrial publicity and concerns for violence in case there was an acquittal. Now, Chauvin was convicted of second-degree murder. He is also separately appealing his conviction on federal civil rights charges. Also today, new testing has found that elevated levels of lead exist in the drinking of some St. Paul. ...level for lead. Lead, of course, can cause some serious health problems, especially for pregnant women and young children. The city of St. Paul is hosting a public meeting. This is coming up tomorrow night at 5 o'clock. Here's where it's at. It's at 1900 Rice Street. The city also has a website that you can visit to find out if you have lead service lines. St. Paul plans to remove all lead service lines during the next 10 years. Well, President Biden spends a portion of his birthday celebrating a longtime White House tradition. He used his presidential power to pardon two turkeys from the dinner plate, and both of these lucky birds, they hail from right here in Minnesota. Fox 9's Bill Keller has more from St. Paul.
We were first introduced to this pair of turkeys at the Minnesota State Fair when the public was given a chance to vote on their name. The birds, now known as Liberty and Belle, are Jennie-O turkeys from the Wilmer-based subsidiary of Hormel Foods. The company says that it was selected back in August to send the birds to Washington, D.C. In fact, following a long road trip, the pair checked into a suite at the Willard Intercontinental where they made their first public debut at the luxury hotel near the White House yesterday. Officials say these turkeys should be well behaved for today's pardoning ceremony since they've been receiving special treatment since they were hatched.
We've been intently raising them and getting them acclimated to some different things that they're probably not quite used to, whether that's sounds and noises and things like that.
The National Turkey Federation gave President Harry Truman the very first national Thanksgiving turkey back in 1947, but not all birds avoided the dinner table. It was George H.W. Bush, the first president who spared the turkeys with an official pardon. Now, it only makes sense that these two birds would come from Minnesota since we produce more turkeys than any other state in the country, and unlike the fate of countless Thanksgiving birds, these turkeys will return to Minnesota where they will live out the rest of their days here at the U of M Department of Poultry Science from the St. Paul campus. Bill Keller, Fox 9.
Always a great tradition, right? Okay, so we know this is Thanksgiving week, and the holiday travel rush, it's already on. In fact, our weather is pretty quiet around here, but there are some storms already causing some issues in other portions of the country. Right now, storms